I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, stand one nation, united all, individual, liberty, and justice for all. And to the flag, to the convention, to the people, to our friendship among the United Nations.
Okay, I think we're in place. Thank you for voting out the words. Roll call please. Priscilla Manoelito, President, Kevin Mitchell, here. Charles Zhang, Chris Martinson, Michael Wong. So we have the people of the agenda, names from the chair. The way to the floor. Thank you, Mr. Aaron Scott. Roll call. Mr. Martinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Manuelito?
Yes.
Okay, we have recognition, students, staff, others.
My name is Juan Kate and it's my great pleasure tonight to present this to Patty Luntztrum. Representative Luntztrum is here with us this evening, but we would like to gather our great faces who are all on our meeting day on our behalf, every building, every area for us. All the information that you were able to get on our meeting. If we share in session and you were able to get several pieces of legislation in front of the right beginning of the right mind, we should really appreciate everything you do for us. Right?
Thank you. Roll now to, uh, roll call. Any other sort of comment? Uh, Renee Partey?
My name is Renee Partey, my name is Karen, I was here. I'm a student, I have all of these things and, um, and it's the right to have a child, to recognize your identity. And there's a problem, and it's a problem that I'm not even aware of, that I don't know, so I just, like, I'm sorry. Um, I can be, again, a little deeper into it, because I've always been very caring. Going on a CD, that's important. Anyways, we want to deal with why it comes back in a couple of months, regulations coming around. There's some things that is on the program that needs to come back to the school. But our schools, our high schools, we have one of the shot interests that we both were just about to say, material. And I'm not speaking to them because, oh, well, I see that this comes, but I'm tired of that. They know the whole mind is right there. And I read the agenda, and I hope. Mr. Martinson, people that will tell us that this is happening, I read some of the reports that we did. I'm not the only one who is, and I speak here on behalf of all of these, and now, uh, and this is where, and someone's come down because of what we're doing here. With the law that is needed, and look at our high schools, walk there, go through there. And thank you for coming today. Thank you for having the opportunity to be here. You'll see it from a standpoint, how our schools are looking. I don't want all those roads, um, that the money was given, and with all this, you know, and now that you're there. And we have really learned something, to keep the ball moving, not to have those other ideas.
Yeah, that time is going to come, but you know what comes and breaks. Find out a lot about all the schools we represent as one. I call Priscilla, I call Kevin, and there are times that I spoke with Mike Paletta. And Rachel Rodriguez about certain programs, certain topics that I need to, okay, you know what, this is what's going on, how can I make that change? How can I make it positive for our kids? I want change, yes, but I want it to benefit everybody in our district. Last year, we only had two students from our high school that attended the CCTE at U and M. I was told back then, there was going to be more students this year. But guess what? Guess how many students there are? I'm going to tell you, there's only one. One student from National High School that attends that school. And guess what? I transported her there. And last year, Mr. Chayney tried to help me with the transportation meter. I didn't go anywhere, but I didn't complain. Again, it was for my child, and I would be the same for the students here. So there's more to just what's on top. And then I see that you guys want cell phones, computers with a board? Come on, we need that for our students. And it looks like you're going to limit our public comments? How are you going to know what's going on if we don't have the right to speak to you about our concerns? To tell you what's happening in our community? To invite us, make us hear? Both positive and negative, how are we supposed to make that change? How are we supposed to be supportive if you don't have the right to speak to you? Now you can hear from the principal and substaff, but how far does that go? Last year, I even did it. I went through the principal, I went through the superintendent, so finally, I had to go to the board myself, did you know? And that's how we made some improvement for our students. The superintendent came out one day for our cross-country meeting, and I walked through the high school building, like, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong, what are you going to do? These are our kids. These are our kids. And that's what concerns me, when I read what I read in the paper, and then I hear, oh, yeah, these parents only come out to know. Be very careful when you say stuff like that. I'm a conservative parent. I'm a member of this community, and I have successful kids who came through these schools, these halls. When I talk to streets, my daughter graduated there. I graduated there, I have family members that graduated there. So please, I ask you, think about our students and put them first. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is college credits. Our GPA scale here at the high school, when I'm trying to work with the superintendent live here, on this paper, we do have students that are taking college courses online. But our GPA scale is only at 4.0. And some of these students are taking college math, college English. But nobody's asking and nobody's fighting for them. I could be the Office A over here, and I could have 4.0 and be the top with the student here, just taking Office A, Library A. Why don't we challenge their role here? Why don't we put a, there's nothing to fail, there's a class here. So that was another concern that I have. And I'm very glad that we were getting some proof on the dual program, dual language. I was part of that, I attended that meeting. Ms. White was there. It, it looks very promising, and I'm going to follow it and see how it goes. And again, we're one of the whole schools, we don't just have everything right there, just a hop, skip, and a jump away. I ask that you keep that in mind, because I'm one of those parents that will go out of my way for my child. An hour there, then I go to work, go back into Gallup and pick up my child. Now tell me, how many parents do you know that could do what I do? And this is going on to be your strength? Through the snow, harsh weather? Again, thank you, and really consider our type one, because if you don't know what we have, you won't be able to hear our concerns, both positive and negative. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much, Mr. Charlie, thank you. We just had one public comment tonight, uh, we'll go ahead and move to three approval of minutes, May 4th, 2017. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Martinson to approve the minutes, it'll be May 4th, roll call please. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Martinson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Manuelito?
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have the number four, approval of concession item agenda. We have six A, six B, six C, six D, sixteen, eight E, eight C, eight F, eight G, eight H, eight I, eight A, eight K, eight L, eight M, eight N, and eight O. Okay, hold, hold on, hold on, sir.
We have one change on date C, number one, it's supposed to be, there needs to be April 29th to make board.
Mr. Rachel?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, so thank you, and the motion by Mr. Cartel approved. Roll call please.
Mr. Martinson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Manuelito?
Yes, sir, yes, yes or no?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Number five, we have state chart code. First is A, report, number one superintendent report.
Madam President, members of the board, I do not recognize anybody here from B M Vera High School, but they were to give a report tonight, is there anybody here to give the report for the year of trip update? That's the only report I have for this evening, uh, we discussed some of the things that we're going to talk about earlier in today in our work session, so we'll... So Madam President, I am stating that we should move on to the next item, since B M Vera is not here to represent themselves through this year trip, we'll add that to the next meeting, it helps that they can take that.
Representative Luntztrum?
Thank you. I'm sure I'm going to go back and go here so I can use my chair, and good evening, everyone, I'm Patty Luntztrum, and I represent House District 9, and Rep. Mitchell, House District 9. I have my secretary saying, well, Patty, why are you going all the way out to Gallup and hoping you'll be seen right here in Gallup? Specifically, that's now a low school district. And I was hoping that we would have more of my constituents here today, so they could hear, uh, some of the things that are happening in San Jose. And I pleased to be out here tonight and to give you an update of what happened at the 2017 legislative session. Session was, uh, very interesting and, uh, very difficult, particularly now that I am the Chairman of House Appropriations and Finance Committee, and that we immediately had started on solid seat. We spent the first 10 days working on solid seat, that we were, uh, not in balance from our previous or current fiscal year. And then we moved into the actual budget, the FY18 budget. We didn't even start the budget until, I believe it was January 30th, we could actually jump into it. Um, and I wanted to let you know that there are several things that are happening with that budget now. One in particular, of course, is that the governor has taken action on our budget. And there's a couple of different pathways that we plan to take as a legislative body. I believe that it may be this Thursday or Friday, you'll see a lawsuit filed in regards to the details that were done in our budget. Um, the legislative portion of the budget was vetoed, which is Legislative Council, Legislative Finance Committee, Legislative Education Study Committee, um, and even our building maintenance, in that component of the budget. And the second component of the budget that was vetoed, uh, a very major concern for us was higher ed. The entire higher ed system was vetoed, uh, starting July 1st. And higher ed isn't just U and M, you know, where you see them paying a million dollars for a basketball coach. Higher ed is also things like the school for the deaf, the school for the blind, the Mexico Military Institute, all the small business development centers, all the ag extension offices, all the incubators, uh, which includes the research and development incubators in Albuquerque, uh, in San Jose, as well as all workforce development programs. So everything about higher ed has been vetoed, and that includes your overheads that are, uh, that is being administered now. I, I have written a series of letters to various newspapers about my concerns, as well as other leaders in the New Mexico House and Senate. And of course, I think it should give major concerns to the public school district. Uh, you know, you guys are educating students to either going to an academic field, or it's possibly a trade, or, uh, or a vocational field. You know, just be all around good citizens is what your, your role is. But if you don't have a place to send these students, that's a problem. And I do economic development work, and last month, I was in Washington DC, working with an industry that was interested in New Mexico. And the gentleman asked me, he said, is your education system that unstable? And I asked him what he was talking about, and I never tell anybody when I'm working in economic development that I'm a politician. I just keep that to myself, so I can hear what they're going to say. And he said, well, it's in USA Today that the higher education system has been vetoed. So it sends the absolute wrong message to, uh, everyone. I, I would hate to be a parent now with a senior in high school ready to graduate, thinking that the student has a lottery scholarship, knows where they're going to school in New Mexico, and, you know, just ready to start their career. So we're going to, we're going to file the lawsuit, and having that, we plan to pull ourselves into an extraordinary session. Because we just really need to get this straight down here, and, uh, or maybe back into place. Along with that, is a resume package, which was pretty, uh, everything that we looked at, uh, in that was vetoed. There are some things that we've been able to try to do with the governor's, give her a menu of options to choose from. She already told us issue of the proof, gas tax, municipal tax, those kinds of things, but we put it in there, there's a number of different things she can look at. Might anticipate that we will be going back into special sessions, she doesn't call us in within the next two weeks, probably after September 1st, because that's when all the state agency budgets are due. And we'll have one quarter of revenue at that time. Anticipate the decrease in revenue, because gas prices go up in the summertime, you know, it's just the way it is, you know, gas prices go up, you know, come and go, you know, and up, you know, basically. And so we anticipate conditional revenue. Uh, that was a big piece of my work, just working on the budget, and certainly when we get back into, back into, uh, the session, my committee will be responsible for pulling all of that together again. But some general information, in this last session, we started January 17th, and we adjourned on March 18th. There were a thousand bills, and, uh, that were considered, 277, uh, were approved. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it's been below since 2003. Uh, the governor had acted on a number, but there were numbers she didn't take action on, so that means leaving the pocket vetoed. Including a bill that was set for, particularly Gallup and Villarreal County, that would raise the liquor excise tax, help us with some of our social programs. Did not take action on that, so it's automatically pocket vetoed. Our tax collections are down sharply, and that's due to the Mexico economy. So what we're hoping to do is to ramp up the tax, uh, part of its ability to collect taxes, and hopefully that will also help our, our fiscal outlook. Uh, our budget is actually $6.1 billion, general fund, just a little bit of an increase over the previous year. Spending on public education is $2.69 billion. Probably with that mounting, it's actually 100, I think it's under one category for education. We, uh, had also, uh, tried to work on some economic development initiatives, why, uh, proposing, proposing support and expansion of broadband. Herehead services throughout New Mexico, uh, we looked at expanding hours of operation for Santa Teresa, which is the port of entry. We, uh, passed bills to raise the minimum wage, and understand both of those were vetoed. We also approved legislation to allow students to take a 16-month break between high school and college, and still be eligible for the lottery scholarship. Well, that's moving down till we get the higher education legislative place, because the lottery scholarship has gone also. Uh, under public safety, we had, uh, legislation in place called the Electronic Communications Privacy Act, to make sure that our cell phones, tablets, and other devices are free from unwarranted government searches. Have that built in place. Uh, we also approved legislation to prohibit people from keeping firearms in their homes, with certain domestic violence orders of protection that they issued against them. Under ethics, which I just realized had been vetoed, the legislation approved, uh, voter, voters to look at a constitutional amendment, creating an independent ethics position. That would have been a good thing to have, because it would have had jurisdiction over a range of public officials, political candidates, and committees, government contracts. Unfortunately, that was not approved. Other measures, uh, we looked at was creating the Carlsbad Rinewell Remediation Advisory Authority, in the middle of their town, they have a big sinkhole now, that's cost them hundreds of millions of dollars to repair. We also approved, which got vetoed, enacting the Caregiver Leave Act, to allow workers who have worked sickly to use those days to take care of not only themselves, but certain relatives. I understand that also. So with that, in general, when it came to school issues, I was involved with one bill that the superintendent had asked me regarding rural isolation. Uh, that, I had introduced that bill as one of my dummy bills, and I know a number of people who identified what it was, because on the, uh, on its review, it shows what bills have been introduced, it didn't have a title on it. Uh, but I had a number of people come in and ask me what it was. And I was trying to get our rural isolation money back into this school district. Senator Pinto agreed to carry the companion bill, and, uh, neither one of them got out of the first committee, unfortunately, but they will be on the LFC study, the, uh, for this pair of, as well as LES C. I had also written the board a letter regarding support from, uh, a letter to each court number, Mr. Hyatt, regarding my experience with your paid lobbyists, regarding House Bill 541. I was asked to carry by Mr. Hyatt, which would restore rural isolation units. My approach on this will be to continue working directly with the superintendent, adopting it as I have, uh, with my March, uh, early March letter to all of you. I would like to be with each one of you individually about what I think would be a great way to have, uh, you represented there, in lobbying support, but I never got a response back to the letter I wrote you, so I don't know if everybody got it or not. And it did go to President Priscilla Manoelito, and I believe Mike Hyatt, so hopefully all remember that copy. Well, our secretary for my office, we see everybody, but you guys are in copy. All right, well, I'll make sure that you do, because I have it here with me, but you sent it to the president. And with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I think we are in dire straits now with, uh, our higher ed situation. It has direct impact on what you guys do, and the way you guys think about things. It has direct impact on our community and economic development, decision improvement, here in the sights. Um, and we understand at this time that there is life artists, art, life artists support on the Senate side, go back into special session, but there's not on the House side. Many of the House Republicans are not willing to cite all companies, so we'll see what happens. Hopefully they will.
This is a bunch of, yes, I, I have a lot more. Um, one of the things that we tried to do as a board, uh, board members, um, before, well, even starting as soon as, um, the session end, was trying to do our legislative priorities in our board. And we did try, um, we, we met with our lobbyists, and they helped us, um, to give updates, um, to our local legislators, to come and talk to us about what we felt would be supporting our children in our district. To see what would be, um, reasonable, or how your, our legislative body would help our board with some of our priorities. And we just had, um, Menyos and, um, Senator Pinto come, and, you know, we felt that that was very important for our children and our, in our, in our district, to have that collaborative, um, meeting together. And we, we really would like, when we start this again, uh, for you to be, to help us with that. I think you're, with, with the new chair that you're overseeing now, I think that you would have a big insight on that, and we really need your opinion, and that, that time comes for us too. Uh, I know you're busy, I know they're busy, we're busy, but, um, we did provide a few dates, and we're hoping that, you know, we could really sit down. And that was a first time for our board, um, to go in that direction, to do a legislative priorities. We've talked about it before, but it really never formed into like an actual, you know, an educated public, um, this past year, and, um... But I think with, with everything that, um... And, but I think with, with everything that you helped us with, I appreciate Mike continuing to be up there. And you guys, you know, requesting him to witness and the water to come up and, you know, be the, helping the different deals. I think one that we're really excited about too is the transportation bill, that's with the Suburbans that did pass. I think that's going to help a lot of our rural communities that cannot go past those pledges. I think that's a big plus for us in that, in that direction. And we thank you for, you know, helping us in the rural isolation deals during that. I think that, that probably will go forward. It was kind of weird time with no money, but thank you so much for that.
I, I know that you are a representative for area, but you also serve in the economic development for the area. So could you comment on maybe any, if it's coming down the pipeline, if I, if there's anything concerning economic development for, for our area?
I can, and that's why I'm concerned about the workforce development programs. We have, on October 19th, we did a groundbreaking for a major trans loading industry center that's just on the west side of Gallup. There are big businesses that are soon to be set up there guarding trans loading, distribution. That means that we'll be looking for workers to be hired. And they're going to require some training for these students, for these new people that are coming in. We don't have any place at this point to have them vote. Until we get this budget situation straightened out. Because we have these programs that are designed specifically for that industry. We're also working very closely with Plains Electric. Plains Electric has agreed to serve as an industrial hub, which is the Escondi plant, providing best fit industries for that area. If you're familiar with Myo Patel and the family paper that's co-located with them. They're looking at industries that would continue to co-locate. So in terms of two big pieces that, those are recruitment pieces, which of course we need job crafting, workforce development for those decisions also. What I could do is, when time permits, is to give you a full-blown presentation on economic development. And I'd like to also invite each and every one of each of my offices, where we have all the maps, we have all the documentation. Just to come in and spend about 45 minutes and be involved in that. But there are some big pieces, some big recruitment pieces that are coming our way. And the education essential.
Okay, what do you see as things that we can do, like as a, as a school district? And understanding that we're not really as involved with higher education piece of it. But what can we do as we're, you know, thinking strategically down the road for, for our kids? What can we do?
Some of the key issues are evening your base, high school in place. That is a program that was started under this committee about two years ago. And what that is, is a candidate that was brought from Albuquerque into your school district. Actually help create the pipeline for students becoming technicians. Welding field, instrumentality, and those kinds of positions. And then these high schools are going to be graduating very soon. It's not base high school, it's base programming. And then they go to the U of M to continue with their journeyman program. Because that's what we really need right now in County County, to be people that have got these backgrounds. And there's type of training they'll be teaching. So keeping that program in place is good. I think expanding on, now it seems like all those type of programs are going away. I'm hoping that's not the case, but I've heard that there's no way to budget cuts. I would like to see more emphasis put on that. People learn to work with their hands and brain and know, you know, instead of just all acting out.
Kevin?
I would just like to say, I think that our transportation bill for our, for our, that you. I would like to have, I think, Senator Pinto, for that, for hearing that before us. Best bill that we have, you know, kind of a last little, two or three, five, six, eight, ten. And I, one, we, I don't know, our lobbyist, Chris Long, he makes, and, 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 I understand he's a good representative. But I think he does a good job, I mean, I think they do a lot, they do a lot of information, I think, and I think our lobbyist did a good job. And I think that, you know, we, our representative, I really, why, I've been doing work together. And I mean, I know you said before you only work through this, and they don't want to know the reason for that. But actually, it's the board that adds our priority to this, that we're the ones wishing for certain items. I would like, I would like, we can do a lot more work together and, you know, one-on-one. And we can, we can, we can, all of our information or comments that we don't have time for. But thank you for everything that you have. I appreciate it. I do appreciate all of your, our, our.
Thank you, thank you very much, Representative Landstuhl. And as a Sam, Chair, and one of the, you can come in, I represent economic development. I mean, talk about lobbying. I'm very happy to sit down and visit with you. I still believe lobbying contracts need to be, aren't paid out. I think all that needs to be looked at that's paid for through instructional funds, that's money that goes to kids. That's why I think we need this. But we can have them all fine. Thank you very much. Next, we have the UNM Gallup Career Services. Emily? Emily Ellison, okay. I did, Elroy did text me, he said he was at Fort Bryant like 10 minutes ago, so.
While we're waiting, I just wanted to say a few words. We did attend our Region One meeting, which was held last week in Colunville, New Mexico. It was actually a very good meeting. And they really showed the diversity of all their cultures, the different meetings, the dance, song, food, we had Abacan food. We have shiitake salsa, we had a Mexican dessert, and another cultural dish. With all the entertainment that we had. And I think that was something that was really great. And, and then to top off the evening, we did have our board election come down. We had Christina Aspis, who was voted in to be our Region One Secretary for our, our whole region. We also had Stephanie Lasetti, who is a super member from Zuni, and also an employee of Yalbecul County. She was voted in as Vice President. And then to top off the evening, we had our very own Priscilla Manoelito. Who was voted in to be the President of our Region One. I was really glad to see that, you know, the folks in the whole district is, eight, eight, eight school districts in our region. And within the eight regions, I was really glad to see that they were able to see what great leadership Priscilla has. And to believe in her enough to vote her in as President, because she's only been on the board two and a half years. So within that two and a half years, she has accomplished a lot. And I really think she's done a great job and I hope she continues. Our Region, Region One, and it consists of consolidated Zuni, Yalbecul County, Gold State, Farmington, Meadville, Asta, Turf. And I think, yeah, one of the, we have, few, but, interesting. And everybody from our area to the President, Vice President, Secretaries. And we, so therefore, we're going to hope the next Region One meeting, so we'd like to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Macho. It was a good honor and, I was nervous, but it fell through. And I see our next presenter is here. We Teach for America, we have number one announced it.
Okay, there should be, what about partnerships, other, other, for impact?
Get shot in camera, yeah, sorry.
Well, good evening, first off, I introduce myself in, with my name, Shere Yar, already announced in the show. I'm from Los Angeles, and you can hear me, that's in, that's in the question. They, 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 I originally called Benado, Arizona, my hometown. But currently called Gallup next to my home, that's where my partner, where I live. And I currently work as the Director of External Partnership for Teach for America here in New Mexico. And I'll be in time for my tour period also.
That is a Shale Yala, very, yeah, is a new person, I'm just going to continue, which is, have a mind to be, to be, to be, to be. I'm from Fort Bryant. Welcome to Navajo Bridge School. I feel like this is my home. I taught here for five years as a Special Division Teacher. I came back home pre-teach for America in 2007. And so I love this, so welcome.
So, I want to make this really short, so, as an introduction, but then keep forward with this to the new ones. I requested this to Superintendent Hyatt and Ms. Manoelito to provide you an update on the work that, and the impact that our teachers are having in the community all across North West New Mexico. We have teachers in all of your various districts that you represent. Predominantly, of course, the GFCs, the CCSD. There's a lot that's going to be happening over the next year, coming into school 2017. Some large developments, we're actually expanding our cores present to schools in Albuquerque and Espanola. So that we can reach the local public communities that are also located in those areas. And also public schools that have a large majority of the community of public youth represented. So we're going to continue to create and foster a strong relationship with the school district. We want to work together and move forward in that endeavor. There are two handles that we provided you. One is an overview of our impact. In addition to that, I provided you another handout about our community support. How we continue to receive support all across some of the area. Most recently, as an example, we brought President Russell Gay to a Teach for America classroom, he actually visited too. And that simplified our relationship with an organization out of Albuquerque called Cultivating Coders. And the students you see pictured there are nine Sherbrooke High School students that were impacted because of our partnership with Cultivating Coders. Teach for America continues to support this nonprofit organization that's out of Albuquerque and is looking forward to actually hosting our second computer coding camp at Sherbrooke High School. I did speak to Superintendent Hyatt about this one or two times, to talk to him about it. I can see this moving forward as we having an actual computer coding camp being hosted here in the community of Gallup area. Because everything right now is focused in Sherbrooke. It does take a lot of money, of course, to support the community to do it. But I think that the school is asking for more financial support to provide a computer coding camp. One of the biggest questions that I had coming into this was what does that mean for young people? Those nine students were featured in Teach for America magazine that we have. And in the last two board meetings I go through, I provided you all a copy of that. So hopefully I had an opportunity to look at that one day magazine. Mr. Longware has a lot of the positive that's near seeing, let's see where we highlighted that story. These nine young people, their work was also acknowledged before President Obama left the White House. Because of the work with Cultivating Coders. That's one of the reasons why President Russell Gay visited Sherbrooke High School. Was there was Superintendent Dr. Bowman and the school board members to hear the story of these students. During that particular roundtable that we had with President Gay, it was so great to see this, that you had TFA students that were in a TFA classroom. Sitting in a roundtable with the president of Alamo Nation to talk about travel economics about them. To share their vision for what they perceive for other young people in the community. President Gay has been a staunch supporter for Teach for America's program, as well as Vice President as, and our friends up south from the Zuni public. This coming Friday, we're actually taking a group of our teachers to meet with Governor Batatia. Who's for the most friend of ours and a supporter of our teachers we need. But no, I think that the greatest thing that happened on that one particular morning at Sherbrooke Library. Was the students actually showed President the websites that they built for outside companies in New Mexico. But there was one particular student shared a game that she developed, she actually created the video game over the last year. And those are things that's innovative, those kids are staying in their communities. And they're all talking about how they want to go off to college and come back home and do the same thing. And President Gay said to me, you have Silicon Valley in California, where you have Google, a place for public media tech companies located there. Sherbrooke, New Mexico, and Alamo Nation, to be the next hub for innovation in that way for any country. I think it says a lot for him to say that. He also challenged these students and told them that I'm going to provide you support and funding. That you kids in this classroom can form together a business, a small business actually. And charge an alimony, the amount money would cost, to create three websites for the upcoming alimony there. And he said, I'll be there supporting everybody. So I think that it says a lot that we're fortunate enough as a nonprofit organization, Teach for America. To stand with other community organizations to ask for their support. And we're continuing to see parents and elders come behind our work and are speaking up for us. We just recently received two chapter resolutions. One from Chachetra, which is right outside of Gallup, by Buffalo. And then the other chapter is Tricor. And overwhelmingly, the people there have passed resolutions, supports, and they endorse the work of our organization in the community. The reason why we're doing this right now, we haven't done it in the last 15 years. Was not only my organization, as being a community organizer in Gallup area. But the question of, right now, we're in a transition politically, both at the state and national level. And there are nonprofits like ourselves that are receiving America for funding. They're potentially going to have a large amount of cuts coming towards our education. We're seeing at the state level as well. These resolution support tells leaders, I like to shut up, I, their representative, Landstuhl. That our organization, as history had been here, has created positive impact. Our organization also recognizes that we can be better, work together better. And that's where I foresee us moving forward from there. But as I conclude on that note, I want to have Shilla add your, not just talk, but more of her experience and recruitment. So one of the biggest things that we heard last year's board meeting. That how we recruiting more Navalet teachers, how recruiting more local Mexicans to come back to tech schools and GFCs.
Okay, so maybe this year, we have one more deadline coming up, six to nine in April. Currently, this, the next year, we have roughly 25.
Currently, this next year, we have roughly twenty-five to thirty-five teachers coming into Teach for America in Mexico. Like already mentioned, some of those teachers are going to be in central New Mexico. But the majority of those will be in this area, working on the Navajo Nation site of New Mexico. For our total numbers, native recruitment this year has actually gone down, which signifies a couple of things. One is hard now to recruit teachers all over the country. And so alongside us, there are other recruiting organizations that are having really hard time finding people to come to new areas and so we're right alongside so many other organizations that do this work. Couple of other things about recruitment next, well, just generally. So our selection process and admissions process in the past has been you submit an application online. If you get selected, you go to a pool of people that will go through a phone interview. From that phone interview, you'll either go through like online activities or you'll just go straight into final evaluation, which is all day interview. You actually have to teach for five minutes. You have an hour-long face-to-face interview with two people. So it's a really intensive, yeah, it's really intense to get into Teach for America. The biggest thing that we've done, we've recognized that with the years, like I think going through the millennials, basically, the younger generations coming out of college, that a lot of them, there's a couple of things that we recognize about them. Millennials nowadays need things to be quick. They need to know as much as they can, get like as much information as they can get sooner. So what we're doing, like our selection process, we actually shortened it. We took out the phone interview. So now from once you apply, so you get right to your final interview, that's actually a shorter process now. So we're able to retain more people because they also have other opportunities that they're seeking. So in that sense, like we've been able to retain a lot more people through our pipeline this past year. This next group of people, right now consists of twenty-two people. I guess they have one more deadline. About sixteen of them identify as European or white. Three of them identify as Hispanic, two as Asian-American, two as Native. And then the last two are New York or Manhattan, so they wanted to remain by us. So we have a diverse population. We're looking forward to getting our next round, I think that's one more deadline. And most of our teachers will be headed down to Phoenix to go to their findings in their training, the first few days of July.
Thank you, Joe. I think to conclude on that, over the last fifteen years, since 2001, that we've been in the community of Gallup in this area, our organization has brought in over 574 teachers to the schools in this area. And so in addition to that, roughly the last number I calculated this past week was about nineteen thousand students were impacted because of TFA teacher. And a majority of those students are from the school district. So we're really proud of the work that our teachers continue to do. We're going to continue to grow and do our part to ensure that we protect our America for funding at the state level, that we're actually out there actively recruiting more native teachers. My job this year changed a lot. When I reported last year, my main thing was the responsibility of overseeing recruitment. Over the last summer, I was directed in my new job responsibilities of I'm going to be overseeing all recruitment for the region. And so you have seen me and our organization all across the area, chapter meetings, within at the Navajo Nation Fair, within all the regional fairs, where we're more TFA oriented. The best part of this is that the students that I met at schools are either juniors or sophomore years of college. So this means, and we all know that recruitment will take a while to bring the best and brightest back home. And so I'm saying that over the next two years, we're going to meet up one goal, that's the thing I'm passionate about, that half of our incoming teachers now will be Native American, be Indian, or Pueblo in the area. So I'm looking forward to meeting them all over the next year and a half or so. I want to open up for questions. We need to.
How are we doing on retaining these teachers that we're recruiting?
So we have, maybe this means in Mexico, I believe we have roughly a hundred and twenty people that are in the context that they brought through Teach for America, either in New Mexico or from the country and have come back home to New Mexico. Of the alumni, how many did you say? Two hundred and ninety, total? Okay, so the number that I gave you are the people still in education. So we're retaining statewide. A lot of times what it comes down to are the people that are from, for example, Albuquerque. If they come out here and do Teach for America, they're going to San Diego, Fall City. So we have a lot of alumni right now in San Diego that are working with, in actual meetings, that are working ahead of Indian education. So a lot of our alumni are actually working for Fall City, help us with within this area.
How many, how many teachers do we have in our district?
Yeah.
About ten, about ten teachers. I'm not sure if there are any questions, but we're going to, you continue to see me at community events and at the community board meetings as well. I have all your contact information. I'll make sure after the speaking, I also follow up with one of the board members to answer any other questions you may have. I know our executive director, Nate Morris, is really excited about the new leadership that we just selected up to this board. And I'm looking forward to ask him to work with you guys, especially if you, Mr. Long, as well, their community, you know, you come from that area. And on that list, they were actually working with Shama Nishita Campit at Point to get a resolution passed. I think that's it. President, you moved up. Good, okay. Thank you.
Our next presenter is from U N M Gallup Career Services, Emily Norris.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'm from U N M. I'm also, pardon, we started on the way to try scrolling up. The success of our students is pretty important to me. I'll start off with the letter that I've addressed to you guys and I wanted to apologize for what you guys put together to me. So, dear Navajo County Board members, University of Mexico Gallup Career Services, please refer them to the Gallup County Council Board, the need to establish a partnership for career exploration opportunities. U N M Gallup is the higher education service provider for our school district as a majority of the New York County school students come to our public Gallup. The purpose of the career exploration opportunity is to create awareness of career options among students and educators, as well as give our businesses and initiatives a more professional understanding. This concept is actually really important. I'm going to write away from the letter because we get a lot of students that come to Gallup and they're not meeting the basic goals of math, science, reading, writing. So we get students that come to Career Services and they see, for example, lab volunteers. What they don't realize is that nursing is science-heavy, math-heavy profession. So if they have this credit information, let's say they have a tenth grade, ninth grade level, they might put a little more effort into their math and science courses than their current students at high school. As opposed to when they come to U N M Gallup and they're not meeting those needs. And I know that Gallup High School and Miami High School have breakout centers. And so when they host career fairs, they have an array of professionals coming to those career fairs to talk with students. However, as they get to, let's say, Cronkite High School or Zegai or Tohatchee, the drive out here was pretty long. So the retail model employers coming to do smart business opportunities. So the opportunities for those students to actually get exposure to that business. So when they come to Gallup, we're faced with this tsunami of choices and limits we have to face with students. So my hope is that with the help of maybe the county school budget and the services that we provide that we need to bring technology companies, computer oriented, because that's where the finance line is. And that's where the students' interests are. However, our involvement is missing because we don't have those programs. Because we don't have students coming into the local district with U N M, U N M's requirements. One of the departments that I see, I guess, we're supposed to do with us, the J O N fund. Whereas we have a debt system in Gallup and then with the J O N sponsorship, assisting the Indian teachers that attend career fairs, current devs, more patient teachers. And at the same time, a lot of these guys who have break through that barrier of higher education, that these Western institutions that a lot of them are maybe are treated. So that's basically the situation that I want to address. It's already short, so I guess really hasn't that good. I'll take any questions.
I have a, I have a couple. One thing that we really struggle with, and like even you said, the drive out here was really long. We just had a public comment from our parents that, you know, we, we, how can U N M Gallup help our students with dual credit or vocational or vocational needs for our rural areas, right? Because not, not, and then we're limited on the number of students that we can enroll into the vocational, C C T classes, which I don't, especially like for one of the schools I represent, which is Gallup Central. I think we can only send seven or eight up to U N M to take vocational classes, or this, the C C T teaching classes. Because those are the ones that need it the most. They're going to, you know, they're the ones that need the welding, the electrician. How can we build a partnership with you so we can increase our dual credit and our vocational debt? Maybe that's a question for your board and your, what is he, the superintendent?
Uh, director.
The right here? And I, I think we need to, we need to broaden that. Because right now, yes, we would like to send more kids over there for them to continue their education, but we need, we needed to go both ways at the same time. Right now, we want to send more kids, but then what?
You're correct in that that would be something that maybe Mr. Cooper might be able to talk a little bit about for, again, the director from Gallup. I, for my position in terms of my interaction with students, it's more on personal level. So the most students that I engage with are not interested in vocational work. They're interested in academic work. They're interested in skill and technology, in case of need. But it's, it's not an industry that's strong there or an economy that's strong there. They want to stay in this area, so we're going to stay in this area. I do know that a lot of vocational students that go to our program are pretty successful. But at the same time, assessments and put those students in those programs is a bit, there's always worth in these people. So some of the feedback that we've received is we're getting New York County school students into the C C T programs, yet they're not actually interested. So when they're seeing, I shouldn't have to mention, because those programs are interested. We need to do a better job kind of addressing that. And bringing more vocational programs to U N M. Once again, I, that's not a theory that I, I want to do, career exploration, you know, broaden the horizons.
And I think when we met the first time at the workforce summit, U N M, I think, you know, we collaborated a lot and agreed a lot about, you know, even the math economics that kids need to really learn about money and credit cards, student loans and.
Exactly. These students that are coming out of their school district don't have basic money managed skills. Maybe even the concept of economy or finances, investing, balancing the checkbook, there's going to be credit scores. They need to know those credit scores, how to finance a car, I mean, basic life skills that we should all have. They're not coming out of there with these skills. For example, we have students, maybe that come directly out of New York County School, U N M Gallup. They get $4,000 straight from the telegraph. All that $4,000 is still in their vehicle, and then they have to finish the program. So those type of concepts, it would be better if we could just collaborate and create, you know, more opportunities for them to achieve these life skills that are more important than, so I'm not sure, but there's all the work that they do. And so hopefully there can be more collaboration between counselors and maybe career counselors and schools, working with academic advisors, and maybe to screen the students to U N M so that they're able to understand the concept of, you know, financially, admission, things that.
I just think your comment there, thanks for all your comments with the J O N funds because, you know, that, that is something that is, you know, we can find some way to utilize those funds, I think helping our youth, you know, attend those kind of fairs. It's essential because some of them don't know which way they're going to go. They don't know what they want to do yet. And I think having those career fairs to let them really see what's available or even the, you know, the military, I don't know if that's a question.
Yes. I guess another example I can give is I've worked with several individuals in developing resumes. They have the skills for different, important occupation and they're very talented. However, they don't understand how to resume them. You know, these also things have a basic ability to engage with and networking skills. You know, these are, I guess, cultural capital that is gained from families who have money, who have social resources. But when you come from a region that is high poverty, high crime, you're not going to have those. So, you know, I kind of feel like in the school district, we're really interested in the success of our students, they can accomplish some basic life skills, which, you know, are devastating to the level of higher education, even in working with the elderly. Any other person?
No? Thank you.
Thank you very much for our short reports. The next we have, number five, we have our notices and recommendations. The twenty-eighth, we have no school due to national sovereignty. May, first, we have a board education meeting in Gallup. We also have May fifteenth, another board education meeting. May twenty-ninth, Memorial Day, there's going to be no school. May thirtieth is the last day of school for students. May thirty-first is the professional development day. And then June first through the third, we have our American Postal Board Association Law Conference at Hotel Albuquerque. Number six, we have our graduations, May eleventh.
Number six, we have our graduations, May 11th, Project Search at the Hilton Garden at 6:00 P M. May 12th, we have Gallup High School, 6:00 P M, at the Antelope Apollo Memorial Stadium. And I'd just like to say, Mr. Shaw and I attended the dedication to, when we renamed the, the dedication ceremony for the Antelope Apollo Memorial Stadium on Saturday. It was really nice to be there with the family. On May 13th, we have the Cronkwood High School graduation at 11:00 at the football stadium through high school, 4:00 at inside the stadium from the gymnasium. May 18th, on Thursday, we have Tohatchee High, 6:00 P M on football field. May 19th, we have Raymond High, 6:00 P M in the gym. We also have Myerara, same day, same time, at the Antelope Apollo Memorial Stadium. On May 20th, we have Central High School at 4:00 P M at Myerara High School Gym. Zanagai is at 11:00 A M at the inside the gym. And then here at Pine, our Navajo Pine, it's going to be at 10:00 A M, Warriors Football We have method on six, going to seven, we have all business. Eight, waiver board policy, P 0900 B D A board organizational meeting, and that is an action item. The sponsor to this one is Mr. Wong. Mr. Wong, I'll go ahead and give you the mic.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and those that are here, yeah, for being here. I guess what this pretty much pertains to is the election of officers on the school board. And I think on April, not April, on February 7th, the voters, we can make coverage, sent a strong message as changes take place within the school district and also the school board. And I believe that that filters down to the officers on the board. And what we've been asking, or I've been asking to do is that although the policy says the election will be in July, I think what I'm asking for is to have the board election done as soon as possible. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's a lot of work that remains undone despite what is said, the steam barrier of the public. So I'm just asking for, to waive the policy and have an election of board officers.
As I said at the last meeting, I really don't see any need for an election of board officers. I think that Priscilla, like I said, has done a tremendous job. She works very closely with the superintendent. She works very closely with the board. She keeps everybody attached to make sure that our agenda is in order and on time. You know, I don't understand, now we think that a board election would affect board officers. I honestly think that the board officer, Priscilla being president, we just stay as Priscilla being president for now. So we hold our board election until July. I see no need for a waiver.
Can I talk?
I, I think with this issue specifically, I'm not one, I'm not one to squash democracy. And I think it's, I think it's at very least worth voting on. If the motion wants to come up for a vote, I think it makes sense to at least exercise our right to vote and vote on it. If it's on the, if it's on the agenda to vote on, then we should vote on it and vote for everything. And so I guess for that reason, I second the motion to hold an actual roll call on and just to vote and let the chips slide.
Thank you very much. I just want to say a couple of things before the vote is taken. You know, being the board president, it's a lot of work. But I can do my work, whether sitting here by the superintendent or sitting down there at the end of the table, it doesn't matter. My voice is for my children, not just in my district, but the whole district. And, you know, there's so many things that I agree with Mr. Mitchell, that, you know, the board election that happened in February, that's not a message that I hear through my community and through other communities that's filtering down to the board officers. We have done a lot, and I'm sorry that you guys haven't heard most of it. It's been portrayed in different ways through the newspaper that we're not doing anything. But as you can see, there is a work's budget. We have continued to make strides. Our leadership and what we do as a board is a team effort. We've done that with the previous board, and we'll continue to do that with this board. So, you know, I really want everybody to know that it is, it's time consuming. I'm very fortunate to have a job that I work seven days a week, and, you know, if I have to put in a Saturday or Sunday, that's what I do. And if Mr. Hyatt called and says we got to be in Santa Fe, you know, that's what I do. But my biggest, and I've said this before to the previous superintendent and to Mr. Hyatt now, is, you know, my vote and what I think is for the messages of the children. In Santa Fe, that was my first training that I attended, that they said, put children first. And how are we putting children first when we've got parents that are telling us, we've got graduation to worry about, we've got credit recovery that our kids need to continue to go towards that learning and path? We've got our budget that we're, we have to concentrate on. And we're taking time away from that to do this for a month and a half that we just have to wait now. Our first election, our first, the first election is in July. The election is the first Monday in July. And, you know, I think, I, I just want everybody to know that, you know, we need to focus on what really matters. And title shouldn't matter right now. It should be our children. And with that, I agree that, you know, we do have to do our democracy within our own selves and the board. But I also wanted to comment on that and to say that, you know, wherever I'm at here, wherever we are at here, you know, our voice is still not going to be silenced. So thank you very much for that and.
That, President.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, this piece of action, this is just to simply hold the elections? And that's all we're talking about? Whether or not we're going to hold the elections, or a way of it and hold it or whatever?
Now.
Okay, okay. Okay. So when would the election be?
Then 40.
Okay, all right. Well, like I said, I don't, I don't think this is a commentary on the performance or anything like that. I mean, I, the support that I'm putting behind this is just simply to push a vote. I mean, I think it's worth voting for, and that's why I second the motion.
Thank you, Madam President. With that, I will go ahead and ask for a roll call. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Manuelito?
No.
Thank you very much for your vote. Moving on to, the next one is the internet, cell phone, computers for board members. This is an action item? Discussion on this item?
I think this issue is something that I talked to the superintendent about, and I wanted to put it on the agenda. Because my problem is trying to work with schools, trying to do my work, is getting on the internet, especially too. There's internets available, but most of them are protected by password. You can't, you can't get on the internet. And I think in order to do my job more effectively, communicating with the superintendent and that type of stuff, I thought that maybe there's a way that the school district can help school board members be more effective in the jobs that they do.
Any other comments on internet and cell phone?
Madam President, Madam President Lord, I wanted to make sure that's understood. We had a discussion last meeting on this particular item. This does not mean that every board member has to receive these items. Again, board members are not compensated in any form or fashion for what they do. They don't give a, we're coming here tonight or whatever. But there is a, there is a requirement for level of communication between board members, between board members constituents, and board members and superintendent. So this is just an avenue to help areas of need, to fix the board, and having this access to communication devices for service. And so if you vote for this and vote yes, does not mean that you will receive all these things. This gives you the option of being able to request them. I want to make sure that's clear. It's just an option.
Actions on the board, or wishes on the board, I'm sorry? Motion made by Charles Wong to approve. Roll call please. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Manuelito? I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and vote yes. Thank you. Next one is see approval of the scope of work for legal services. I'll go ahead and speak on this one. Board members, I would like to ask that we move this to the next meeting. I still haven't received one of the samples that I requested from, from, by Mr. Joe Keen. He is the executive director of the Schoolware Association. He did review the ones that we submitted, and he liked what he saw on the past proposals. But he still was going to get one from another school district, and I have not received the scope of work from that one. So if we could, move this. Thank you, Mr. Wong, for moving on to the next board meeting. Thank you. Roll call please. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to P. Time limit on public comment. And the sponsor for this was Mr. Shaw. Go ahead and give you the mic.
Public comment is a courtesy ordered by the Board of Representatives. We don't have to, it's not state mandated that we have public comment. The New Mexico School Board Association recommends one minute for public comment for each person, no more. And it's supposed to be kept at that time. The public comment should also be only on what's on the agenda. That's, that's what the New Mexico School Board Association recommends.
Madam President, I just wanted to say that we as a board think of our own policy on public comments. We have gone through several trials of certain time limit, keeping it with comments to what's on the agenda. We, we've done all that. We recently changed it back to open it up to any concern. I can't see if anybody wants minutes to tell a concern of any sort. I think our children are more informed than that, and I see no reason to try and limit it to one minute. And the School Board Association may give recommendations, but as a board, we are that our own governing body, we make our own policies. And I think we owe it to our parents to be able to listen to their concerns. I mean, we have such a big district. We need to know what's going on within our district. And the only way we're going to find out what's going on within our district is to be careful of our parents, our constituents, even teachers, administration, because of our school, our school district size. You know, I don't think that we need to be limiting it to one minute. And I think our parents deserve that.
I think it's reasonable to trip the amount of time in the interest of the efficient meeting and also in the interest of allowing more people to share their opinions, allowing the limitation of the time. It seems like it makes sense. It helps people understand what their guidelines are and maybe make their comments more efficient as well. In the interest, I think, of giving more people an opportunity to voice their opinions would be a good reason why I would, why I would vote for a time limit. As per, you know, about what they want to talk about, I don't know if that necessarily matters, but certainly a time limit makes sense just to allow more people to talk.
With that said, again, I think that we, right now, our time limit is five minutes. And that five minutes is hardly any time for our parents to give a thing to say. A lot of our parents go over that five minute limit. Ninety percent of the time, they would. And therefore, we should take some time away from that. You know, always when we're doing this, maybe we're thinking, and that's what's starting the project, we're starting that again, you know, the foot going on right now. Trying to change time limit. You know, I think, like I said, you know, our parents and our children are, should be number one priority. We should be able to walk through the distance, no matter how long it takes. But we're not, we're invited to want to see the board, to stay real ones in the board meeting for an hour and a half or two hours. That's not what we're meant for. We're here to ensure our concerns are justified, to ensure our specific input, what they deserve. And that's what we're here for.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to make a comment on this. Number one, it's a good idea to reduce the time of public comment. Because number one, to me, I see ourselves as becoming much faster. You know, any time you stay in a position as an individual school board member, you have public that, that disagree with you, they snicker at you, and they talk behind your back or with the back. Think, you know, if public comment is to be constructive, then the people that make those comments should be more professional in what they say. Because I see public comment, we're looking for comments that will strengthen the education for our children, that will provide guidance as to how we can improve education, not just petty comments and those type of things. The other reason why I want to, you know, support reducing public comment is because of the staff. You know that public comment takes time, especially if it goes over five minutes and you have maybe twenty people that want to make a comment. You have the staff that travel from Gallup to different locations. And sometimes they don't get home until after 1:00 P.M. That increases the risk for staff. And that's why I think, uh, reducing time of public comment is something that should be supported.
When we talk about time, I mean, I think a lot of our, a lot of the multiple times time is taken when we have to go into presentations and other things. I don't think our public comment is, I mean, you know, there's some times that we can't be on like tonight, there's other times we have can, you know, we never know how, how many public comments we can have. So we can't say that it's going to shorten our latency. But we do have control of the agenda as far as, you know, what's being presented. I mean, maybe if that's what you're saying, that you want presentation to be short, then, you know, you might well say that we need to give our presenters lower their time as well, because that means they're doing the same thing. And, uh, and I really find offensive to say that anything a parent has to say or decide that they have to say would be considered petty. Like, I, I definitely, I don't understand. Anything, I think, any kind of parent has a concern and has grown up on that, I would never consider that petty. I would, I, I consider that something that probably needs to be looked into, otherwise the parent would be here in the first place.
I think you misunderstand, Mr. Mitchell. I think what I said is that sometimes you have people that make comments, they snicker at you, they make petty comments. I didn't say parents, their comments are petty, or certain individuals are like that. And I think that's something that you really need to realize. And, and, uh, we're not talking about presentation. Remember that we're talking, the issue is, uh, reducing time on, uh, public comment, not presentation.
I would like to comment on this also. Um, you know, our parents' voices are very important. And we hear it when we're out in our communities. Um, some of them are strong enough to come here to us and say it in public and on camera where everybody can, within our, um, range of our line or both, um, can hear us. Uh, and, and their concerns are the ones that are concerns of many other parents within our district. Um, some don't have the means to get out here. Uh, so I, I would like to keep it at, uh, five minutes. I don't think that's ever been a problem. Uh, yes, the New Mexico School Board Association does have its own mandate, um, and, but I think for the parents and even for our children that make public comments that come up to us, um, during our board meetings is essential. Um, as elected officials within our district. And now behold, um, when our grandparents raised us and our parents raised us, they talked about us having a strong inner spirit. And that is part of being a public official within, within ourselves. Um, and you have to have that strength to take the negative with the positive. There are so many times that Kevin and I, and I guess, continue to be stabbed in the back and put down and, um, demeaned at times. And I think that is, I think even a word that was used last, last board meeting was disgusting. We, we, we know our own hearts, we know our abilities, we know what we're here for, and that just made us stronger. And even though our vote, again, will be on a majority side, um, on the minority side where we, I know that we're going to be outvoted, uh, on some of our issues, but, you know, we are the, the ones that have sacrificed a lot. And I think, um, our, our families and our communities have seen that. And I think that within ourselves, if we want to be this public official, we're going to be doing that much. We're going to be, but, but, you're supposed to have that inside of you to have that ability to overcome these things. Um, and as far as our staff goes that are here, we are very fortunate and we're glad that they are present. But we do have, uh, they are compensated. Um, most of them are here, they do get an allotment or a addendum for them to be here. They are paid to be here. Um, and I think that, that has that, shows that we provide them with that addendum for their time. And, you know, it, it does take a lot, but we need to continue to do what we're doing. And even bringing our board meetings to the public, out to the rural areas, is something we need to see and hear within our community. So I would, I would really encourage our board members to keep it at five minutes and maybe with the assistance of having a timer, that somebody can, um, um, inform our parents that they have a minute left or something with that effect could also help within this. But I, I think with their, um, freedom to speak their mind and freedom of the First Amendment to where, um, we need to hear from our parents is something that's really crucial. And we fought for this for a long time, and I can't believe that we're going to go back. Um, I hate to go back to where it was once again, when we had the outcry of our parents that their voices weren't being heard. So I would plead with the board members that we need to hear from our parents and not restrict them to one minute. I think that's so unfair for us to do as board members at this time. With that, that was a motion from, uh, Mr. Shaw. Uh, any other comments, board members?
I, I think, I, I, I think where I stand on this is in the interest of having more public comments, and that would be the only reason why I think it makes sense to, to limit the time. Uh, I could probably be, you know, I think I could probably go with a higher time limit to go, you know, we went with the, with the time limit, uh, at least trying it out. I would like to hear from more parents. A lot of times at our board meetings, when we get towards the end, there's zero parents there. And I think a lot of that is because some people don't have the stomach for four or five hour meetings. And I, I would like to hear from more parents. I'd like more parents to come and participate. And, uh, and I, I think if we were able to, to limit the amount and help people make the comments more efficient and more effective, that, that we could, we could get more apparent input into. Is there, is there a middle ground between five minutes and one minute? Would somebody?
There's a motion for one minute still. Um, roll call please. Mr. Mortensen?
For one minute? Uh, I, I, I'm going to say no. I'll give him more time, but I would like to see a time limit.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Manuelito?
No. I would also like to see a time limit.
Thank you, board members. Um, we have now two, um, two middle college addition of twenty students. This is a discussion item.
Madam President, Port of Education, Dr. Rob Hunter and Ken Brown are here. I'm not sure if they're going to stand up or just, Dr. Hunter, presenting this evening. They're representatives of Gallup Middle College High, Middle College High, Gallup Mexico. And so I'm going to turn the mic over to them for a presentation.
Dr. Robert Hunter. I've been, I'm here since nineteen ninety-five. Started off working at Clancy High School. But here tonight, um, so I'll talk a little bit about our program. And the first thing is that we have some students doing some pretty exciting things. So I wanted to extend this invitation to you all to come and check out our senior voice. And so that is on page eleven. We've got, um, six students that are staying in full rights of college. We've got one who's, who seems to be in a D program. We've got a couple that are Davis Fund Scholars. We've got a couple that are College Horizon Scholars. We've got a campus fellow. Um, all that in the graduating class of about thirty-six students. So that said, uh, I wanted to thank you all, board members. Um, it's good to be the Allen County School District's opening charter school. Um, you are our authorizer, we are on the same team. So not sure if you had a chance to look through the presentation yet. I can draw attention to a couple of pieces in there, and I really, actually want to hear from you all, questions you may have. So one thing I wanted to clarify, um, we always have a waiting list of students that want to come in. We can't accommodate everyone. We also know that we need capacity if we're going to expand enrollment. So on our end of it, we've been pretty careful, but we don't want to get too late. So we lose the ability to do the services like I just explained to you, we've been able to do with our students to give them the kind of support they need. So, um, what they don't want to clarify is that, um, I think that in the past, we may have had a perception that when we increase enrollment, we're, we're poaching students from GMCS. It is true that the majority of the students do come from GMCS, but I wanted to take a look at some of the statistics in there. There was a point where about eighty-four percent of them, a few years ago, were coming from GMCS. It dropped down to about seventy-seven percent last year, about sixteen percent this year. So really a three-year trend. You can see that we're getting a lot of students who are coming from places like Rome. We get a lot of homeschooling students. We get students from Wicked. We get students from, everybody's got training centers in San Bernardino. So our students draw from a pretty big geographic area. I, I did take a look through at our present waiting list to see, okay, if we did bump up twenty students, we know who those twenty students are, where are they coming from? And it is true we love them, they're coming from GMCS. But that's eleven out of twenty. Anyway, um, Mr., I wanted me to give you some statistics, um, wanted to talk about the financial impact to the district we had when we bumped up that sort of a situation. So you can see that, uh, see, about sixteen percent of our students are coming from GMCS. And, you know, a lot of our, our parents, a lot of the parents that are really in the know and, you know, really intelligent about, you know, opportunities for their students, they value a program like ours. When I look at the sixteen percent of the students that are coming from GMCS, just that group, um, thirty percent of those are children of GMCS administration. So they understand the value of the program that we have to offer. I've done some outreach, I've done some chapter houses, talked about our programs, uh, tried to get better representation of what we look like in the rapid. I wanted to just broaden your attention to the final page of this before I entertain some questions. Because what are the advantages of the district having a charter school? Well, you've had, you've had us since two thousand and two. Our students are in your enrollment. You know, whatever grade we get is part of the district overall that are graded, so you benefit from that. The other thing is, unlike a, a pure or a state charter school, you know, a portion of our budget does go to the, um, Allen County Schools, the two percent bodies. And that is for services, student information, send you services like, um, you know, we, we use Kinet, Power Schools, kinds of things. We can get some technical support when we needed to have some training from people with central office if we do use power grade. So there is that piece. And that includes students that otherwise weren't even in GMCS that are in our program. They're going to generate a little bit of that. Uh, see, we are also a upper, because there are a lot of people out there that are attempting to open up state charter schools. Now, state charter school would be competition, you know, whereas we are not, we're playing on the same team. If you wanted to just hand out, uh, there's a letter of intent. GMCS's three-year superintendent filed a letter of intent to open a charter school. If you look on page four, I have it as some things in green, um, key state, the reason for the state charter school is because a program like Yale College isn't serving enough students. They have a waiting list. So I want to draw your attention to that, because should that happen, then you would be losing students. It wouldn't be part of your count, whereas ours are. So at this point, and this is just a discussion item, I know it's not anything for action, but I am curious, you know, I would love to entertain questions that you may have. I would, our students would love to see you on page eleven, to acknowledge the way the success is made.
Why do you think, uh, most of your students come from Myanmar?
Why do they mostly come from Myanmar?
Yeah.
Probably it's proximity. I mean, yeah, we, we ask families when they come in, we hear different things about it, but, uh, I think probably the, the best thing for me to, to answer your question would be to say, um, it's a big school, um, it's it's a big school, and most of our students also at the Mi'amara's front. So they do make up about fifteen percent of our enrollment.
Do you have any survey evidence or anything like that, why a lot of those school district parents aren't aware that you're helping those people out there, why they send their kids to the charter to the college high?
Are you asking why the district administration is doing it?
Yeah, any idea why these district employees don't want to send their kids to the district school?
It's a quality education. I mean, if you think about it, students that get in are getting free college and they're ready for it. And if you're a children educators, you probably throw them out inclined toward, you know, wanting to go as far as you can, you know, their own parents are educated, that kind of thing. I don't know exactly why I have to really survey them, but you know, we are talking about students in our program, where the majority of them are graduating with their first years of college. So it's a great deal, and I think, you know, I think that they know about us, whereas not everybody else always does, so that could be part of it.
Is there any test, test approval evidence of, you know, this higher level of expectation?
It's a good question. I'll tell you, I don't know, we, one of the professors who'd been the department chair of arts and sciences approached me last year and he said, you know, middle college is a really interesting school. He said, because when I'm teaching classes, I can be assured that the top couple of students in that class are for middle college. He says, by the same token, I can tell you the three or four course wasn't also middle college, because you guys aren't getting middle ground. You're serving severely at-risk students and you're serving students that are very advanced and wanting to move on to college. But yeah, to answer your question, we do how placement tests to determine what courses they take, and we support them very well. When our students graduate from middle college, they're not in need of the reputation that was talked about earlier. They're taking, they got their first years of debt as students. And a lot of it is because we've worked really hard to structure a school where they're getting a ton of support from everyone on the staff. And we do seminars weekly, we talk about those secondary goals, we do career interest inventories. The state loves the next step plan we use. It's all aligned with their program to study in college.
Now, I'm a senior college graduate. Do you honestly, like, really think that the kids graduating from there already, three hundred levels classes, that many school in there?
Yeah, the HEP, Higher Department is going toward a common core of courses and they're going across the state, they're identifying them by a certain number of the same way, the same requirements. We also have a staff in our building. We're small, just about five of us, even me as an administrator, I do teach. But we have double open. We've got highly qualified instructors who are teaching dual credit of myself. So this is something that we can give a lot of attention. The other thing we can do is when the classes get kind of large, we can split them into two sections so that we get the individual attention to me. So I'm not sure if I believe, I just.
What's your long-term vision for the college high?
If by long-term vision you mean how big do we want to get?
Yeah.
I want to stop at one hundred. I've read the research, I've been at schools, you know, obviously I want to get this opportunity as many students as we can, but the research tells us you get above one-twenty, you lose that intimate feel, you lose the family sort of situation you've got going on, you're just too big. You can't, you can't really have the personal relationship with the students.
And how big is it right now?
About one-hundred.
So you, this might be apex of where you want to be is what you're asking for?
It is, and we're restructuring our lottery too. That's another part of the problem. What we were doing in the past was we were just adding to the list and it would get bigger and bigger and would roll over each year. There's about leather twelve early colleges and middle colleges in the state, and we're taking a page out of some of their notebooks that were saying, what we can do to make this more equitable is they can apply for the year that they want to get in. And if they don't, then we won't maintain the list, we'll just do another lottery and those who didn't get in can apply the following year.
Do you have to apply like years in advance?
Not anymore.
Nice.
No, ten through twelve.
You know, when we first did this to increase it before, I think it was my first secretary as a board member, you know, I, my biggest problem right now is the way our budget is within the state to risk losing more money in our district. And, you know, I know eleven may not be much, but I think having that, that's my biggest problem is, you know, with the unstableness of our state budget right now, I, that's my focus and that's my concern, my biggest concern, because, you know, we, and the New Mexico School Association, it was presented to us several times, to where I think we generate seven thousand eight hundred, six hundred dollars per child, but then the charter doubles back. I think you guys get more money for our child that goes into the, into your program and, first, I don't think that's fair. The second, how, where, we need, we need that resource to stay in our district and especially this, I don't know how you can, since we budget-wise, how that is gonna benefit our district.
Okay, so there's always this dichotomy between, we're talking about students, we're talking about money, you know, what's the best interest of the students. But without even going there, you're talking about the small school adjustment, which rural schools that are real small are able to hold some money in front of. We've been fortunate to receive that. That has been on the legislative chopping block every year. It's, they're gonna do away with that. You're gonna see our numbers at some point reflect yours as far as the per people cost. I don't know, we don't, we don't receive it in title funds, we don't apply for those, we don't apply separately for the ID and B ones either, like special education or gifted program. We've just never done it because we haven't really the capacity with our small staff to do that on our own. But, you know, that said, I'm not sure if our account is part of your opinion or your title budgets. I know that our students are included in the ID and B application, and when we look at how many of our students are in the ID, we're talking about our students have written the district about two hundred thousand dollars a year in just ID and B fund. So that, and that's just one area. So it isn't like, there was a lot of rhetoric out there about anytime we bump up enrollment, there's a quarter million dollar loss. Ken and I scrubbed through the office of budget management system, we looked at all the different funding streams, we tried to figure out, you know, is that accurate? And we came up with a very different number. And especially when you add in the two percent monies that district receives, you add in, you know, the monies that our students are generating for ID, it's not that huge a loss. It can fluctuate depending on how many are coming from GMCS versus how many are coming from elsewhere.
Just clarifying, Dr. Hunter, ID and B funds are not the same as operational funds.
Right.
So you can't compare those two together, the big deal, why ask for it? It's different kinds, it's different monies to compare that. Isn't the best part is to compare right now, just to make sure, it's not what the board can be misled in that we gave two hundred thousand dollars to be used, how we want to, an operational cost is too complex.
I'd like to say something. The operational dollars that we receive for students by Dr. Hunter's definition, does include the small school adjustment? I don't know that all of those dollars go back to us, because the high school that the student comes to us from may be the largest school that has not received this small school adjustment in your district.
It comes out of state, that's my extra money for our week gain, that's whatever seven thousand, our week gain, fifteen thousand week gain, that comes out of the S and P.
And that is true.
It's spread out across the city, but we lose the seven thousand.
All charters across the state?
Across the world.
That receive this small school adjustment, you are right, that is true.
About fifteen thousand dollar losses, seven thousand plus whatever charter.
Right. That is true.
Can you explain some of these at-risk factors that you can, what this, I've understood, what you're dealing with?
Sure. So you asked about the at-risk factors. We have a lot of students that have been to the Gallup County County Schools during the boarding, based on contract. We have a lot of students that if we go into power school, so we can look at log entries and see what kinds of issues they have, we can look at attendance issues they have. A lot of our students have had multiple attendance letters sent home throughout the years. I think the biggest at-risk factor that we see though is whenever a student who has failed a minimum of two courses toward graduation, then they're at risk of not having non-time graduation. And that's been a big percentage of our students that come to us, are students that have not passed all, they failed two or more of the core required courses. So we're looking at those at-risk factors, though, and I can only pull that data on the Gallup county students. I don't have that data from students who come to us from Rome and other places. But because once they become our student, and that's the other thing that's kind of interesting is, you know, we are your district charter school and we're not state. If we applied state, then we would be competition, then we would be taking a lot of your money. That's not what we're doing. This is not the relationship that we're interested in. There was talk of it before, but I don't think it's the way we should go. I'd like being partnered, I'd like having access to the different kinds of things, a volleyball is sitting back there, you know, if we have a student we want evaluated, we're able to do that. You know, we're able to get all this stuff together, get the services. So I guess that's how I would respond to that.
I thought about more catchy name, middle college high school. I haven't. I have no reason to do that.
Yeah, so really it's just, I assume what will happen, this is a discussion, I'm gonna try to come back before you all, with the hope that it would be an action we can talk about, going to one-twenty, keep on our cap there. You know, like I said, if you look at the intent to open a charter school, it's a state charter school, and, you know, it's modeled very closely after what we're doing and the justification, you just provide evidence within your letter of intent, you know, what's the need? And, you know, like I said, the reason we're tened to get it because, you know, middle college is limited, they have a cap. And so with the waiting list, there's a need.
I think, I think I would really, if you're gonna bring this back to the board, I would really like to ask that if, that this goes both ways, because I think we need some of you guys' services too within our district. Like I mentioned before, we need more dual credits. And yours, the U and M Gallup is so hard to work with to get those dual credits. We get them from INTU, we get them from New Mexico State University, we get them from San Juan College, but it's, it's like, you guys are not helping us, but yet you want our help. We need your help, and you're talking about money and students, but if you're really, really concerned about our students, then you need to tell your board and your administration to help us too.
You're talking about U and M?
Yes, U and M.
They're not our board, your board.
And then also with, with, like, the T-Sol endorsement, I mean, this is a message you can pass on to the director, but even with our T-Sol endorsements, we need that for our teachers. And we're getting it from other colleges than, than the ones that's just right down the road from us. And again, with our vocational, what, you know, our, I mean, those are, if, if we want to have a working relationship, we need to have that from U and M also.
Well, and that is something, there's a couple of things to respond to that. I guess the first one is, I have offered and assisted to an extent, especially with all the stuff that we're doing that progressive with gifted education. I understand the opposite of rights has come down to Gallup County County Schools because of the gifted issues. I have offered to yous, you know, we figured some of this out, bring me to the table, you know, include what we're doing in your reports to the OSDR, we are one of your schools. You know, this can get, this is what they want to see, and we're doing it, and we're in your school. The other thing is with U and M, believe me, this manually does. It's awfully frustrating to be on that campus and to have all the dual credit doors closed to us. We attempted, there's a reason that we went out to Navajo Tech, we weren't being permitted, our staff wasn't being permitted to teach the courses of U and M. They have had a change with their department chairs, they have been much more open. Four of the classes that we were doing last semester through Navajo Tech, we were doing four, three of them are now U and M classes. They're a much more friendly environment with the new director of student services, a new department chair of arts and sciences, they have been very willing to work with us. But I hear what you're saying, because in the past, it was extremely frustrating and, you know, it was almost professional suicide for me to go to Navajo Tech, because a lot of faculty there at U and M said, why are they doing that? Why are they doing the courses here? And so that became politically kind of a bad thing, but why is because our students needed them and they weren't letting us teach them. That is such change.
I think it adds, it adds to, or Dr. Gordon, I forgot, I forgot your name. Your comment about why students are going there, maybe if you're a part of this issue, is that U and M has been, for whatever reason, unless it is negatively, because I had a good conversation with Dr. Dyer, Dr. Hunter, regarding the unwillingness to work with our students the way that they've worked with middle college in that area. So the opportunities for dual credit, the opportunities for our teachers, the other credits, like their teachers, to provide more dual credit for our students would help students be able to get the same opportunities, possibly a associate's degree within our school system, not just through our charters. So that's one of the things that needs to happen, is that our local school, or college campus in Gallup is the hardest school in the past to work with, to help make that relationship change. I'm actually, I'm begging for it, because it's ridiculous that we have to go to the outline school, it's tolerant, that work with us like that, they want to work with us. And I'm not saying that Gallup, U and M has never wanted to work with us, but it's much more difficult for whatever reason, certainly. So it's kind of verbal commitment from U and M to work, to work with us, but I need to see action, to respect them, because middle college students, Gallup, the Gallup students that give you your Gallup High or Tahachi or Navajo, they need the same kinds of opportunities. If I can get teachers here, their professors, or at least they can teach the courses, so they can dual credit, that's an easy opportunity for me, because I can have students travel from Navajo into Gallup, where it takes some credits to get back and still be able to graduate with the proper credits they need by the time they're a senior. So that's a huge problem. We can almost make it work in Peru and Tahachi, we cannot make it in Saegai, we cannot make it in Grand Canyon, we'll have a college there. Definitely can't do it in Navajo without having a better relationship with the board.
And an example of that, actually, would be when we had approached our motive initially, about we're teaching these courses, can we teach them through U and M? We were told, well, doesn't a teacher have the credentials to teach that college course? You know, and so it became, you know, if you want your person teaching physics, is there a master's in physics? So if you look at the standard that they were holding, which was quite a bit higher than a lot of the other colleges, it was hard to pull that off. You know, Navajo Tech said, if they have a master's degree and eighteen credit hours are in that area, then we're gonna say that that's fine. That's how that job works. So what our experience is now then, is that when U and M, their interpretation of who's qualified is more along the lines of what Navajo Tech was doing to us. Okay, you do have Okay, we do have these teachers with master's degrees, but you look at the faculty we have, you know, between the five of us that teach, there's at least seven different post-secondary institutions that we taught at, different colleges. I mean, they have experience teaching at various schools and yet they weren't being allowed to do it at UNM. That has changed and we are actually on the schedule for the fall, myself and two instructors for teaching UNM courses.
I know we're on a different subject, we're going to talk about UNM. I just want to add that one of the positions in the district now is a college or career readiness coordinator. Their specific job will be to build those relationships, get more teachers, the focus process, have the ability to teach college courses in our schools, so they can start working on programs like the college office where students can generate credits that can go on and further their education in college, but also potentially help them receive the resources to figure out how they can go to the program.
That would be really pleased to help you with that. In my career, I've done a lot of this, MOUs with different colleges. I've gotten things set up that I didn't do before, created those relationships. I was pleased to work with the coordinator and, you know, why we didn't do it. We found things of work that need to be extended to anyone.
Any other questions, board members? Comments? Thank you very much.
Bye.
Okay, we did have one more public comment, we'll move into the next board, board meeting. So we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Thank you. Martin, then Rob Hall?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Yes.